Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Independence City Council Meeting, Tuesday, February 23rd, 2016. And it's sunny and beautiful, although we've been cold outside. My records show that all the councilors are here, happy and glad that it's outside. No visitors to make comment. Excuse me? Anybody have time to make? Thank you. We have a couple of things that you have on your... There is an executive session related to real property transactions after new business. So just make sure that that's on your report. You have at your desk a appointment for a budget committee. We have a vacant budget position. Shannon Cocaine is how that's pronounced. She's currently living in John Pop's old home. She's attended a number of our council meetings since generally over there. And so I visited with her and I would recommend her appointment to the budget committee. And while we're at it, Bob Archer has agreed to be reappointed to the budget committee. And so I put forth both of those for your...
Move to approve Shannon Cocaine and reappoint Bob Archer. Two seconds.
Motion, multiple seconds. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
An opposed motion carries. Thank you very much. Karen will make you put the appropriate notification. Thank you very much. I'm going to call on Councilor Pack and Councilor Morton to give us a brief update. They both attended a meeting with Congressman Schrader. And how'd that go?
It went very well. We were well represented as the city of Independence. We had two council people there. And there was some great representation from around Schrader's area of most interest right now, which I would say is rural. He talked about the energy and commerce. Is that what it was? Commissions that he's on. And it was a very rich discussion.
And we were well represented as the city manager was there as well. And he mentioned the transportation bill, which had recently passed. And I looked into a part of it, some things there that could impact our park community. One of the things he talked about was economic development, particularly in rural areas, and how a lot of the anticipated growth in jobs from the manufacturing sector just really haven't capitalized because we do compete locally. So what he was encouraging local governments, local areas, to do was look at things like locally grown potatoes and consider ways to create value-added products and then move them into a trade sector economy. So I thought that was interesting.
Great.
And one more thing. He also talked about the importance of education and educating our own workforce here because a bunch of our... Many of our technical jobs are being taken by imports from other states.
Mr. Klein, did you want to add anything to... I think that's a fairly complete report. It was a fairly strong county emphasis on timber, the timber funds, and just in general. He was well surrounded by the county commissioners. But he had a lot of focus on education and the trade sector economy. Great. Well, I know Congressman Schrader as well as Senators Merkley and Wyton. I really like the outreach that they do. And between them personally and their staff, they're... We are not distant from our congressional members. And they do return my phone calls. We're going to go immediately. Come again?
Yeah.
So since I was visiting with you, would you like to make a report on... From the library?
Sure, sure. Okay, we had a board meeting yesterday afternoon. And the board continued, with Robinson, but continued to review the library development plan, which is trying to update objectives and goals and opportunities that the library will have for our citizens. Also, this is something that will be in the mail. The CCRLS is working on the RFID transition to radio...
Frequency.
Frequency ID things such as security gates, self-check kiosks, et cetera, and standing alone payment stations. So it's going to be a two-year process, apparently, with CCRLS. And I'm sure there'll be some expenses for the library under that. On a light note, March 2nd is Dr. Seuss's party at the library. At 7:00 PM, hopefully the friends of library are bringing nice beef birthday cake.
Hopefully he doesn't show up.
We're hoping he doesn't show up. He's a very nice man, but you know, partying at his age is a problem. Help me with this minute, Robin. The Independence Library Chess Club.
A recently...
Recently set in a tournament? In a tournament. I mean, these in the state, right?
Well, it was a... In the... A couple of our folks are now...
National.
Qualified for national chess.
Yeah. I mean, these are elementary school kids and they're just...
They're aha notch.
And so everybody is surprised when they hear, "Independence Library Chess Club." You know, that's... We're just... Anyway, we're famous in the chess world. And I like that everyone may know that. And we'll follow with that, okay? Okay. And then lastly, on the spring break, which is the 22nd of March, there'll be a whole lot of activities at the library, including our favorite Bob the Builder, which is my favorite. You know, where our public works guys brings all the nice machinery and everything. The kids get to climb all over it. I think that's about it. We're just ongoing... Board is ongoing with the development plan. So, Karen, you take care.
Thank you. I'll let the public works folks know that it was nice. They have nice machinery. And they have a whole lot of fun with that Bob the Builder.
They do. Oh, yeah. And it's not just for kids, is it?
For big kids. Do you want to say that the library is... Do I get to run some of that? So, ready for it?
That was done courtesy of Rod Killen.
Yeah. Oh, I should probably mention that. This is the friends of library. Think that Rod Killen donated a PSA for us about our library and it was specifically geared towards the movie event, but it also gave some history things about it.
What was the date of that movie event again?
Oh, March 7th. Monday, March 7th. If you have a bucket ticket set. I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilor Lewis, can I on the Zoom board?
Okay, we had our meeting on February 10th. And one of the things that we talked about is the museum is getting pretty full of items. And so we were thinking about having a yard sale, but we have to talk to Karen about what are the procedures for some of the items that we have there. But we'll talk on a board in a next meeting. On the January staff report, a museum study class from WOS came January 12th. Peggy gave him a tour, spoke about her work, and put him to work creating content lists for many of the boxes that came back from the storage. Two interns and a wonderful WOS volunteer are hard at work on various projects around the museum. And museum staff will attend the volunteer internship fair at WOS on February 17th. And hopefully, on Monday, April 11th and 7th, we'll have a Chinese Oregon speaker lined up here at the Mississippi Center. The museum will have aesthetic presence at the Mid-Belly Egg Fest at Rick Gril Saturday and Sunday, February 27 and 28, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And little by little, things are getting put away in the proper storage. And they're kind of organizing the office and the exit areas in the basement slowly.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Traffic Safety. Traffic Safety. Well, we had our Traffic Safety Commission meeting last Wednesday. Unfortunately, I was not able to make it, so I don't really have a report to give you on that one. So I'll brush on by to the next report I need to get. Okay. And sure, the Hopp and Heritage Festival Commission. That actually, we're going to be meeting on Thursday. We decided our meetings are going to be the fourth Thursday of the month. That's going to be the best day that everybody can be there.
Not the last.
Not the last, the fourth. Sorry about that, Nancy.
The fourth Thursday?
Thursday, yes. Until we have to change it. People are busy. But we'll see. I think we can do this for a while.
And at what time?
6:30. Yes, exactly. And one thing I want to say, we already have our first vendor signed up. We've got bands that are interested in playing course again. So I think we're off to a pretty good start. We've already made quite a few contacts as far as sponsors. So I think we're off to a little better start than we were last year. I would say we have a great core of volunteers, but just like it was today, we could use a few extra people, just do some small tasks if there's, you know, somebody who wants to get involved with the city and do something that's kind of fun. It's a fun group, whether it's a fun event. We'd love to have some extra volunteers. You can contact me or contact Karen, or we'll get you in there somehow. If anybody wants a volunteer for that. Great. Nancy?
Can I add a couple of things?
You can.
As a brand new liaison.
Sure, you can.
Okay. One was the grant funds that we have available to us from the 24-hour relay challenge back in 2013 gave the Monmouth Independence Community Foundation the money left over from the last challenge of a relay. And it's available to the Hopp and Heritage Festival. And I think it's around $2,200. We sent out, Bob and I, Bob Archer and I, sent out application forms to past recipients as well as to everybody in the school history. Because many of the recipients were school teams and stuff like that. So the deadline is March 7th, which doesn't give a lot of time, but hopefully we'll get some responses and we'll give out another round of $500 grants.
And so they... Vote to whom?
Uh...
To Nancy?
To Nancy.
Okay.
That's right.
Or Bob, I think either one.
Bob Archer's on the application, but he needed an application form. We have to send it out. I have it all on my computer and I send you all the information, the criteria, and the application form.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, wonderful. Let's go to the city staff report. Mr. Klein?
Herrmann, this is Councilor Morton. So a few things. It seems that my staff lost their way here this morning. But we've got a few diaries and made a... Different people are different. They all have the reasonable reasons why they're not present for here to share this beautiful time of the day with you. Several things, so I'll just kind of work through the list. One, you have enclosed a report for MINET, but I wanted to add one more thing. You do have a separate operational analysis being done for the MINET board, and I think that's coming to closure here in relatively short order. So I'm assuming that before, we're going to hold everybody at the time it's slated. So that's going on. On semi-related, I'm going to be going... Normally this year, I go to the Northwest Regional Managers meeting, primarily the Washington Oregon managers, but we also sometimes get Idaho when Alaska involved in that. This year, I'm going to swap that and go to the National League of Cities instead. And I think I'm going to talk to them a little bit. One of the issues, I think, this is an opportunity to start talking on our delegation. We don't have any strong federal issues, that's the city government. But the one issue that I'd like to press a little bit is just generically is if they help with the, what used to be the rural electrification, now the rural fiberfication or whatever, you know, to get some parity with what's going on in our urban communities with extension of fiber into rural areas. So that's going... There are ongoing programs, there is ongoing funding, and I just want to make sure that it's understood from a rural community that we find that extremely important. That is our lifeline. And of course, that would be a tremendous opportunity for MINET to expand its offerings as well. So I just wanted to... That'll be something that I'll be pressing on my trip. So a lot of other things, let's see. We had our first coffee with a cop. Police department is doing a periodic, they're looking perhaps quarterly, sit-down with the community. This is past Saturday at McDonald's. They had, I believe, five officers or four officers?
Maybe five, maybe. Yeah. Thirty community people.
Thirty, we're keeping paying for them for now. So that was right early at McDonald's for a cup of coffee. And just, you know, had a chance to sit down with a police officer and Chief Stan Weiss and everybody to really say everything. So it was a well-received fact. So we're going to... You know, that was... They felt good enough about it and we're going to continue to do that and put it on. So I think it was really nice. Also, the community academy is going well. It's not, it's a... Lightness to begin with, it's a new program, and I think we're... I think it's extremely well-organized. Park is doing a tremendous job putting that on. So it's getting feedback from the folks over there is by and large very positive. We have one little bit of a Sean Citizen the other day, but other than that, we'll get over it. Good communication there. Sometimes the job they do isn't always, you know, fun. And so the hard side of the job sometimes has to come through as well, and so folks get to see that as well. We were... We are in the running for another innovation award. It's Oregon Innovation Award through PSU. The winner of that award gets a Hatfield Fellow student for a year. And so that's really an important opportunity for us. And we want to give our current innovation department, if you will, is about a 30% FTE. And so we want to... The ability to have a dedicated innovation student, somebody who's in the innovation program in Portland State would be a huge plus for the work that Sean's doing. He's got a lot of things, he's a lot of things that he's working on differently. Like, you've seen the flavor of it during his presentations. But to bring all that, to do all the nuts and bolts of that takes a lot, you know, a lot of fun and groundwork, and he could really use that help. So I think we have a strong proposal. Part of that is, part of the final, we did our presentation last week at Portland State. And one of the last things we need to do is prepare a poster. So we sort of scratched it out, chicken scratched it out at the event, which the hands all do that, you know. And kind of, we were pretty happy with what we came up with. Sean's got some pretty good artistic skills up top, creative skills. And so we talked to Western. They have a program we've been working with in the Chamberheads and the decline at the half as well. Some of their students have worked with us on commercial art. And the teacher, it had a short deadline, so the teacher, instead of trying to find a student, they could pull him together. The teacher herself is going to take on the project and help us produce a, you know, a poster that we can use for this. We also want to use it for just general marketing of what we're trying to accomplish. So it should be a really interesting effort. And it's, you know, it's a lot of fun and, you know, the things we're doing are, you know, we're going to run it by the Regional Solutions Team as well there shortly, who is my next point. They're visiting with us on March 27th, primarily to look at the Valley Concrete side, but we're going to give them a little flavor of what we're doing in the innovation in the big data world. And I think this poster will be a, you know, a nice little peat, a little add-in touch for that when we get that put together. But we have a couple of projects that we ultimately want to, you know, go back to them for possible funding. So this is a way to keep that groundwork laid with them. So working on that. Other areas, Karen has been assisting quite a bit with SB 4130, the public records law. I'm trying to get that, help get that into a condition that will be acceptable to the cities. To what comes out of the legislature is a lot more burden and no resources to accompany that. So we're trying to gamble real on some of these things. We're all for transparency, but, you know, recognize that we, school communities in particular, have limited staff resource and financial resources to get these things done. And so we need to be able to cover those costs so we can do our other jobs as well. So that's what's going on there. Sean is making a presentation to the Oregon Broadband Advisory Council on Thursday, again, about our innovation efforts. So we continue to push that as a job. We are also setting up visitations for the Ford Institute folks that are going through the transformation of their program. And so we're trying to get them in front of some of the brain trust here to give them some thoughts on what would be important in Polk County and this area. So that's ongoing. Reminder on your calendars, March 2nd, 6:00 PM, 6:30 to 6:00 PM is the budget committee meeting. We will have food available, so you don't have to rush and cram something down. Councilor Long, you're looking at it all the time, falling off the planet.
March 2nd?
March 2nd.
It's Dr. Seuss's birthday.
He won't be there. We can find a way to bring the two events together. Budget, Dr. Seuss, it's a natural.
It's a natural.
Natural thing to happen.
Okay. So it's 6:00 PM, you said?
We have upstairs.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, the budget committee, so we have the people group. It's an orientation training, so much of it is frankly materials and things that you see, there'll be some, you know, I think there'll be some philosophical conversation about whoever's going budgetarily, and you can give us, certainly it's an opportunity for the Council of Budget Committee to say, "Well, this is, it's really important for us, even though you staff think you want to go this direction, it's really important for us, Budget Committee, that you attend these particular needs or desires." And so it's not just a pro-form opportunity to find out what's going on, but it's also an opportunity for a feedback loop to say, "Staff, you're on the right track." Really, you're not on the right track. So I'm just going to try to get you off the hook, but I just changed my mind.
All the places you may go. Saving me from remembering my...
You dropped your left side.
Left foot, right foot. The... I'm saying...
So our Extension Service folks are just ever busy, ever active. I mean, that Milford Park is just as amazing a resource if you haven't been out there. I mean, they're nothing, basically, to help from the city, but not much. They've done a lot. So they have received a $500 grant, this reminder. If you've seen it, here it is. It's a reminder, they received a $500 grant for a fruit-free legging. So that's planned for this Friday at 11:00 AM. If you have space on your calendars to jump in and help out, you're welcome to come join everybody for that effort. If you haven't been out there, it's incredible, it's incredible work they've done out there. It's just, this is one, a little bit of a hidden jewel. We're trying to get bored out as we can, but it's a wonderful location. So we're going to have, let's see, Valley Concrete. I'm going to pass on that, so we can give you an update later on that as well. And then I mentioned the Regional Solutions. Today, we'll probably chat a little more, but today, the city hall is a status hearing that was continued from a couple of weeks ago because of the bankruptcy filing. So today, and I don't know where we are, but there will be some more information on that coming as well. And let's see, today I'm also a guest lecturer for Dr. Mark Angles at his Western class. All-C analysis, see how that goes. Two hours with potatoes. I brought a cupcake, so that should be good. Yesterday, we were working on the refunding again on the bond issue. We had our ratings call with standards and core yesterday. I think that went fairly well. We're trying to not only hold our existing rate, but to improve. We think our financial capacity continues to grow and improve, and so we're pitching the case to improve that and get our rates reduced from in the marketplace. So we'll see how that goes. But I think we had a good conversation with them. But unfortunately, they have a center rates committee that, you know, doesn't get to listen to my rate pitch. So it passed on the filter. We are... One, Navarro is working hard with the, our outreach effort. We have a soccer group as a committee that's been meeting, has been a couple of times now these past couple of months. And we'll have, one other thing, is a inaugural event. And tend to be set for Fronter's Day, or the Saturday of Fronter's Day weekend. I guess Fronter's Day falls on a weekend, always does it. So it's tend to be set for that weekend to do an inaugural tournament of some kind. So details to be forthcoming on that. But there's a lot of excitement. Kudos to CYS for donating, I think, a commitment right now of $5,000 for equipment and related paraphernalia to outfit the fields. So we're pretty excited about that, together with a fair amount of volunteer effort. We're getting some, you know, expecting support from the wires, some support from the Academy Soccer League in town and others. So it's, it should be exciting, you know. The field seems to have survived intact. We have to disclaim them out there. We're looking to get, we'll get some volunteer effort to spread some march chips and get the fields ready to play.
Have we developed a policy of how we're going to schedule fields and all that sort of thing? Are we working on that?
Well, and we're working, we are working on that, but at this point, the city will retain that responsibility year one. We want to get a sense of who is, what the use is going to be, where, you know, where the most, where the most effort's going to come from. And then after year one, I think we'll look for, you know, hopefully to be able to turn it over to some other group to do the operations of it. And maybe just a commission, I don't know. But, you know, maybe one way or another, we want to, you know, we don't want to be primarily responsible after a bit of time because we really don't have a ground department or recreation staff. We'll retain the effort status because we want to make it sort out, you know. There's a fair number of interests, a fair number, you know, stakeholder groups that have shown a greater interest in it. But I want to see who actually shows up and plays and does the effort, does the work before we say, "You, you, you do this, that," or the other. I think we'll end up retaining the maintenance of the fields regardless. It's about a pocket, but the city's best situated to do that. So that will be in the budget.
That answer your question?
Okay. So yeah, we are working out on the side as well. We're developing rules and signage and we'll start to develop a calendar for scheduled playing. Primarily, we'll have playing tournaments, like we'll get priority, then there'll be play in other practices that will probably be second tier or third tier. And it'll always be open. That was a question too at one of our group meetings. We have no, we don't believe, unless you do, we don't believe in support. We think it's important to keep it open.
And the final item on my list, though?
Sure. Yeah. Final item on my list is, the plan is also underway for the next round of festival, and it'll be from my chief vote. So that's going, that's ongoing as well. That's why I have free to say.
Great, thank you. Just get a question. Ms. Johnson, I think this next one is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, councilors, you are now going to be filing your statement of economic interest electronically. And you don't have an option to do it on paper, it has to be done electronically. So I've got your account set up, with the exception for one person on the planning committee didn't give us enough seats. But in the meantime, the state has a trading video that I would like to show you on how to walk through that statement of economic interest. Bye. walk through that Statement of Economic Interest. Bye.
Online application. It provides... Welcome to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Electronic Filing System Instructional Video. This video is the third in a series that is designed to assist users of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission's new electronic filing system for recording applications on the web site. This instructional video is specifically designed to guide annual verified statement of economic interest filers through their personal profile completion to the jurisdiction or jurisdictions in which they are designated. There are many benefits to this new online application. It provides secure login, 24 hours, 7 days a week access, allows users to log in to update changes to filing records as they occur, and provides efficient and effective way to meet the recording and filing requirements found in ORS Chapter 244. During the course of this instructional video, the following topics will be discussed. How to create a user profile, and how to navigate additional account features and system requirements. It is important to note that even though the method in which you provide the information has changed, the required information and filing dates have not. To get started, you will need to locate the system-generated email from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. The email subject line should read, "SEI Filer Invitation to Create Account." The invitation will be addressed to you as a jurisdictional contact assigned to you. Within this email are instructions and a system-generated invitation link. You will use this link to access the electronic filing system. If you have any additional filing requirements under ORS Chapter 244, each assignment by jurisdictional contact will generate an email invitation. You will be required to accept each invitation. This acceptance is what combines your positions to one filing requirement. You will select one of these positions to create your personal account profile. After the initial "Create a New Account," you will select the link in the additional invitations. If you are routed to the "Create a New Account" interface, you will log in. You will not create a new account for each position. If you cannot locate the system-generated email from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, contact your jurisdictional contact and request the invite token. The jurisdictional contact can provide this code to the filer. The filer can then manually log into the electronic filing system. Instructions on how to log in manually will be provided in the Statement of Economic Interest Filer Electronic Filing System Instructional Handbook, available on the Oregon Government Ethics Commission's website. If you are a required filer viewing this instructional video, but have not received an email, or you are no longer serving in the position, please contact your jurisdictional contact. The jurisdictional contact will be able to confirm your assignment. It's important to note the system-generated link in your invitation email will be good for 30 days from the date you are assigned. You will need to complete your personal account profile prior to this expiration. Due to the upcoming filing period, you will want to complete your account profile before March 15th of this year. Once you click on the system-generated link in your invitation email, it should open the default browser on your system and present the "Create a New Account" profile. By selecting the system-generated link, you've been directed to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Electronic Filing System "Create a New Account" interface. As previously noted, you will be required to accept each invitation. After the initial "Create a New Account," you will select the link in the additional invitations. If you are routed to the "Create a New Account" interface, you will log in. Do not complete a new account for each position. Now, a few of the system's features will be reviewed before beginning the instructions on creating a personal profile. The cursor will point out the feature discussed. The system header. The system header is constant. It is the top portion of the webpage and contains a navigation bar to help users move between common areas on the site. The system header features a login and log out, welcome message for users that are registered, and navigation features, for example, to go back to the welcome page. The page header. This header is used to identify the functions of the page, and at times it will also contain additional navigation features. Body of the page. You will create and edit here. As you key in information, the page will scroll up and not be visible. You will need to scroll to view all fields. Use the scroll bar located on the right-hand side of your browser to navigate up and down. For additional navigation, the Browser Back button is located in the upper left-hand corner of the web browser's toolbar. The Browser Back navigation will allow you to return to the previously visited webpage. You'll be creating your own personal profile account as a Statement of Economic Interest Filer. You will be creating your own personal profile account as a Statement of Economic Interest Filer. It's important to note that you will only have one personal profile. To complete this process, you will select a username and password, create two password security questions, verify the pre-populated personal profile information is correct, and you will also have the option of identifying an alternate contact person to receive reminder notices assigned to your position as a Statement of Economic Interest Filer under ORS 244-050. Create your personal profile, username and password. You will choose a username. You will choose a password. Passwords must have a minimum of one upper, one lower, one numerical digit, and one special character. Refer to the accepted special character list in the text help. Using a special character not listed in the accepted character list will result in a failure to successfully complete the registration process. Confirm your password. Passwords must be at least eight and not more than 20 characters long. Choosing your security questions. You will now choose security questions for the purposes of password retrieval. It is important to note that the answers are case sensitive when requesting password Personal profile information. It is the filer's responsibility to maintain the profile information, which includes address, phone number, and email. Your date of appointment, last name, first name, email, phone number, and address have been entered by the jurisdictional contact based on information currently available. Please review to ensure that it is accurate. It's important to note that you can only edit your own personal profile information. You cannot substitute another individual to your assignment. If you need to terminate your assignment or are newly appointed, contact the jurisdictional contact within the jurisdiction you are serving. The jurisdictional contact has the administrative ability to add or delete you from the seat. You will not have the ability to terminate or add yourself to a position or a seat. Alternate contact email. This step is optional. If you elect to provide an alternate contact, you can select the checkbox to ensure this individual will receive all notices related to your position as a Statement of Economic Interest Filer under ORS Chapter 244. When keying the email address, you will need to either key the at sign or click in the space after the at sign to complete the email address. Do not use a tab key to transition from the username of the recipient to their domain After confirming all information, select Continue. Verifying your registration. You will now be asked to verify your personal profile. Select Continue. Confirmation. If you have successfully registered, the confirmation page will appear naming the jurisdiction you have successfully registered. You will receive a system-generated email notification that you have successfully registered. Now that you have successfully created your personal profile, you will now select Log Out. Now that you have successfully created your personal profile, now select Log Out. To Log Out, use the Log Out feature located in the top right-hand corner of the system header. Reminder, if you hold multiple positions, you will need to accept each position by using the system-generated link in each invitation. Mark calendars for the open filing period for the Annual Verified Statement of Economic Interest Report. You will receive a system-generated email advising you of when you can log into your account and begin the electronic filing process. It is important to remember the filing dates and required information for the Annual Verified Statement of Economic Interest has not changed, just the method in which you provide the required information. You will now have access to your account 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, to update changes to the filing records as they occur. This concludes the content of this instructional video. If you have any questions during or after your account creation, do not hesitate contacting the Oregon Government Ethics Commission.
Thank you. That was really, really a lot of fun, I know, but if you guys...
Welcome to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission.
It was great, but we're...
If you have any questions, you can always contact me as well, so.
Did you say you created accounts for us already?
Yeah.
So then we...
You should be getting that, you should have gotten the email.
Yes, so we still have to create a profile.
So you still have to go through and create your profile.
And it's, we have to get it done properly, so.
Yeah, so it's due just like it always was, April 15th, just like your taxes. You have to have it all filed and finished by then.
But we have to do it within 30 days for receiving.
Oh, yeah, to create your profile, yes, you have to do it within 30 days of receipt.
Now, everybody's got their, okay, yeah. I have my purpose and put this as part of, so that we make sure that we got this done. It is important.
And then we'll be getting a second notification, is that right, Karen? No? Actual filing itself?
Yeah, I believe, I believe that's right.
That's what I read. After we've done our profile, and then there'll be another notice, right?
I believe so.
Okay. Karen? How long has it been since we should have gotten the original email?
Last week.
I think it was like the fourth or something.
Could have been, could have been the week before.
So, okay, Karen will help.
Yeah, let me know if you have received it. I'll let you show the point.
Okay, all righty. Included in our packet is a MyNet monthly report. Is there anybody, if anybody has, I don't know if anybody just made any comment or anything. I want to make sure that it was there.
The only comment I have is that the MyNet board is moving ahead with, we're exploring new ways of making money into the account, so. And it's moving slowly, but it's moving in the right direction.
Okay. All right, we're going to keep us moving, without objection. We have annual liquor license renewals. Officer Headlin.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, councilmembers.
So each year, the Oregon Liquor Patrol Commission provides a state of independence with a list of all establishments within the city who have requested renewal of their annual liquor licenses. State of Independence has up to 60 days to make a recommendation on any of the licenses, or it can opt to make no recommendation. All establishments are eligible for annual renewal pending payment of the applicable renewal fees and approval of city council. A list of establishments within the city who are due for annual renewal of their liquor licenses are as follows, and that list should have been in your packets. Does anyone have any questions about any of the information related to that?
Well, I, please, I, you know, I can see that there's one, one facility in particular that has a number of incidents, and I believe that same facility was in last year's report. I think my question last year was, what can our police department do, or what's your policies in working with the owners of those establishments to maybe change procedures internally so that there's a reduction in the incidents? So I guess I'm going to throw the question out there again.
Sure. And I can tell you that I wasn't here last year to speak with you about this, so I don't know what's at that time. I'd be happy to work with the sergeant that presented last year on that as well. I, my intent, I think, in my recommendation here was to work with them to do some closer monitoring of their activities related to that, and work with the OLCC and see what methods we could put in place. I know they have some, you know, people that work undercover, they go into establishments and maybe see if we can schedule some of those on a more frequent basis. Because I do believe that there, there may not be a huge issue today, but if we continue to let things go the way that they have been, it could become more of an issue, and that's not what we want. So I would just want to work as an, as an agency, I don't think we have any specific things that we would do. We can go through and do our checks periodically, and we could see if we're inside the establishment, we see if the people are absolutely falling down drunk, then yeah, we would make a few more inquiries and talk to the servers that were working that evening. But I think working with the OLCC, I think we could probably work with the management and see what measures we could put in place to keep some of that happening, whether it be over service, or whether it be maybe employees that are coming off of shift that are remaining on site, we assume that I do all of these issues.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Appreciate the complete answer. My, my purpose in asking the question really is because it is the second year now that there's been some information on the reports that showed there were problems there, so I just want to make sure we stay on topic.
Absolutely.
I want to make just one, and that is, having seen many of these reports over the years, comparatively speaking, things have gotten really tame, and there's really not much going on out there, and I think we should, the big concern I have is that we're seeing everything that's reported, and that's, I mean, this is it, we're in good shape.
Yeah, to my knowledge, everything that we have, all the information we have, is included in the report. Obviously, I'm not going, I'm not going to tell you that I can guarantee everything is in there. You know, we do the best we can to make sure all that stuff is filed correctly to make it easy for us to compile the reports, but there may be a few that are missing. But by and large, everything that happened within the city is going to be included in the report.
Would it be appropriate to follow it up on Counselor Beck's comment? If we can get a, maybe in three months, an update on the one locations that have been having some challenges, just on, kind of closing the loop, I would guess, just as to how the conversations have gone with the OLCC and the owners. I guess providing you a little bit of an additional, we're interested, we'd love to follow, like to know what happened, what, where things are.
Yeah, with your, with my offices, I wouldn't have any problem preparing.
Gee, was that something that seemed reasonable?
Absolutely, I, I'm not going to downplay the numbers here, but I don't know that the OLCC is going to see the urgency in the matter the same way you all are, but we can certainly sit down and talk to the one establishment.
That's, that's...
Ourselves. I don't know that the OLCC is going to say what looks like an issue to them.
Which one establishment are you?
Chase.
Because also Arena has...
But that is maybe because Chase is...
Right, but with these numbers, remember, this is for an entire year, right?
Yeah, and I have to, have support to hear your point of view, that I have been, I've seen, you know, three pages of things that, and arrests were made, and it appears in this case that not too many resurretted, they were just made note of, in courts, yes.
My comment wasn't so much, you know, that jumping up and down, but gently just saying, letting people know that we do keep an eye out.
Yeah.
It's kind of like a, not with capital letters, but with a small letters. If, if I understood you correctly, you were asking for perhaps also a quarterly update to the council last week? That's it.
That seems too...
Yeah, like that's quarterly, but like...
Maybe once, updating...
Halfway through.
Yeah, sometime, just, yeah, that's fine.
Progress report.
Yeah, that was it. I'm not locked into time, I don't think anybody's locked into time. Want to make sure that, makes the first conversation a lot easier.
I don't even see the need for a written report.
No, yeah, or oral is fine. We'll do.
Any other questions?
Okay, we do have an, this is an action item.
I move to recommend a critical of all the liquor licenses upon receipt of city fees.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, all fifth, second, five, I say nine.
Aye.
Oh, very, thank you very much. Anything else under announcements or anything? We'll do the, the brief executive session, trans-council, the council will allow the executive session, propose to negotiate real property transaction, executive sessions are also sent to the ORS 1926602, the last council meeting, executive session. Representatives of news media, presenting news, they'll be allowed to attend the executive session, representatives of news media, the director, after course. I mean, deliberations are in the executive session, except for state general subjects of the session previously announced, those will be made in the executive session. Time of council, conference room deliberations, executive session, on the executive session has generally returned to the double session. I don't anticipate any, don't anticipate any action, I don't anticipate any, anything additional afterwards, unless somebody asks something they want to let you know about. Okay, just let's, Jay, get out with us, okay, we'll go down to...